Meeting to order, please, for the Santee County County Commissioners. At this time, before we get anything else started, I'm gonna turn it over to our, uh, my listers.
I would like to invite Mr. Price and Ms. Goodman to come forward. They represent our local Veterans Council. Mr. Price is going to lead us in prayer, and then Ms. Goodman is going to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
God, I pray that you will send my prayer and ask for your blessing as we conduct this meeting for this county and come into our hearts, minds, and actions that will glorify you as we talk about things that need to be done for this county and ask that the blessing be to everyone that's participating in this action, in this meeting. He says, "Oh, great." Amen.
Again, one second. Group of attention, present arms.
Our Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Now, I need, uh, an approval of the agenda.
Make a motion that we have approval of the agenda at this time.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, approve the agenda, all in favor? And please, thank you. Motion so carries. All right. Is there any, uh, questions or thoughts or anything about the consent agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor? Motion so carries. All right, updates and presentations on item two of our agenda. We have, uh, Mr. Mark Turner, will, if you will, please come up and bring us up to date on the Ivanhoe Water Project.
Good afternoon. Uh, to give you a little update on Ivanhoe, rode the project again today, and, uh, they added a third crew onto, uh, the Ivanhoe Project. And, uh, as of today, they've done over ten miles of water, water line installation. Uh, things are going along real good. The weather, the rain we've had this past month has gone behind a little bit, but, uh, not, not a lot. They're, uh, doing real good and, uh, coming along as expected. In fact, they're ahead of schedule. While I'm up here, I would like to go ahead and give you update on these other projects we've got going on, if you don't mind. Uh, the water tanks and booster stations at Midway and Bonnet's Field, we had a little problem, the contract had a little problem with a leak, they had to do some maintenance work on it. We're expecting now the tank and pump at Midway to come online July the first, and the Bonnet's Field one come on August the first. Clement Area Phase Two, uh, that consisted of roads like Carol Store Road, Ernest Williams Road, Autryville Road, Mount Carmel Church Road, Mini Hall Road, Libby Road, Holland Road, Dunn Road, Welcome School Road, Nathan Dudley Road. Uh, the survey's been done, it's 100% completed. Uh, the design is in progress, they're about 30% done with the design, and they're gonna start submitting permits here within the next month, hopefully. Uh, the Roseboro Lakewood School, GFL landfill area, uh, the water line there, they have got it surveyed and constru- and designed, they're hoping to get permits approved by August the first of this year. Once we get the permits approved, then we can put it out to bid and, uh, start construction. Uh, DEQ, two weeks ago, approved us putting in a new, two new, uh, tanks and water, uh, pumps, one on Taylor's Bridge Highway and Hopton, uh, Highway and, uh, King Road, three of them. Uh, we're gonna put that into, uh, in the paper to advertise June the fourth for bids. Uh, gonna open bids on July the first, and if we get three bids, and it's within our budget, we'll be bringing that to you, probably in the August meeting for y'all's approval for the wells. Uh, wells is very important now, we are selling a lot of water. In the last two years, uh, we have hooked up over 400 new residents. Uh, we calculated that water up, and that's over 58 million gallons of water a month, just for 400, 400, 400 homes, and we have 7,000 customers. Our water capacity is getting close to the top, so we are gonna have to concentrate on getting more wells in the, in the ground, and I'm also talking with the City of Dunn about purchasing of some more water. Also, the applications for Lakewood School, uh, excuse me, for, oh, Warsaw Road and Mintz Road, or Mintz Community have been submitted. DEQ has confirmed with me that they have received their applications. Uh, we should know something with them the last of August or first of September. Uh, our iron and magnesium treatment project on Fasing Highway across from Timberlake, uh, we're hoping to do the startup on it maybe the mid to end of July. And that's all the projects we've got at this time going on, thankfully.
A full, a full table, thank you. Move on into our action items. Move to the Board of Health. Uh, Ms. Wanda and Mr. Rick, if you will, please come up and give us something on this opioid, opioid resolution, please.
Okay. I am here this afternoon to request authorization in order to use our opioid settlement funds, and I think you have the resolution in front of you, and I will read parts of it. And this is a resolution by the County of Sampson to direct expenditure of opioid settlement funds, whereas Sampson County has drawn the national settlement agreements with companies engaged in manufacturing, distribution, and dispensing of op- opioids, whereas the allocation, use, and reporting of funds stemming from the national settlement agreements and bankruptcy resolutions are governed by the memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments, and we are in that lawsuit. Whereas Sampson County has received opioid settlement funds, whereas opioid settlement funds, the local government, governing body must adopt a resolution that indicates that it is an authorization for expenditure of opioid settlement funds and state a specific strategy, or strategies that the county or municipalities intend to fund pursuant to option A, which is the one that we chose, um, and I've given you a copy of option A, and state that the amount dedicated to each strategy for a specific period of time. We are requesting authorization for the first strategy, is naloxone distribution. Uh, we're requesting 133,097.76. This will take place during the years of July 1, 2025, to June 30, 2027, and the activity will be to support programs, organizations that distribute naloxone to persons at risk of overdose, or their social networks, and to distribute naloxone to persons at risk of overdose, VIA, testing, go kiosk, and community distribution, and this will be, the provider will be the Health Department. Our second strategy will be introduced by Rick.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, the second strategy is, is doing what we call a post overdose response team or port team. Um, since January of '25, 43 local governments have been using a port team or plan to use a port team. Essentially, it would be two paramedics on duty, s- uh, seven days a week, 12 hours a day, to be able to respond to overdose cases. If they respond during the day with the transporting ambulance, and that patient refuses to go to the hospital, that port paramedic would stay behind and work with that patient and that family to try to get them into some kind of treatment, and that would free up that ambulance. If that port medic was not available, or if this was in the evening, that port medic would, the next day when they come in, would follow up with that patient, and essentially, we're trying to get them the help that they need. Um, we've spoken with Harney County, Johnson County, and other counties as well, um, we've spoken with Commonwealth Health, they've expressed an interest in partnering with us. There's many more resources in the county that would be able to be utilized with this port medic, and essentially, they're responding as a medical professional, but also as a social worker, trying to get them into the right, um, treatment that they need. And if it's approved, we've got some work to do in terms of, um, clarifying the data, setting some SOPs in place, working with our medical director to administer some Baxone and, and so on, but if, if there's any question, be glad to answer them.
Does this, approving this policy, does it require the creation of any new positions?
For the port paramedic, yes, there would be two new positions, but that would be funded by the opioid settlement funds, so it'd be no county tax dollars.
But when the opioid settlement funds are depleted, will it then require county assistance to maintain those salaries, or?
Probably not, because if, if we, so this is for a two-year period, if it turns out that it's not as successful as we think it would be, then we, we have positions open all the time, that we could just move them back into a regular position and respond on an ambulance.
And for the first strategy, it does not require the creation of any new positions?
No, sir, we, uh, will not have any new positions.
Okay.
Thank you. Any further questions? All right. Uh, entertaining a motion.
Would it be too much to ask to table this until after the budget season is passed?
Are we on a time crunch as far as the money for the open settlements?
We have put this off, we've not, we would like to have it start the fiscal year if at all possible, we really would.
Okay.
I think we need to go here with it because like, just, uh, Ms. Robinson is saying, we've had the money, and it's time for us to, to utilize it, to help some people with it, because we have needed people in Sampson County that need those services, so.
Yeah, the money's been available for us for a while, we've just come up with a, with a reason of how we're using it, so.
Currently, how much money is available?
Can you help me with that, Melissa?
Yes, give me just one second.
While she's looking that up, uh, for the members of the audience, the opioid settlement money can only be used for certain designated products, it's not an at-will or anything we can do, it's specified programs that it can only be, that money can only be spent for. Am I correct in making that statement?
Right, correct, and you have the, there are lists of strategies that's included with our memorandum that we get from the state, and when we submit, they will review those and tell us if or if not we can use that funding. So at any point, if they see that something is not correct, they will pull it, so we do have to have that in place, but it can only be used for the specified options that we have been, been, uh, given to us by the state.
Uh, the amount's a little bit over $2 million.
Over $2 million? Okay. So that $2 million could fund the program for emergency services for how many years for the salaries?
I, I don't have those figures in front of me, but I can tell you that the, the two-year cost estimate is $454,000, but over $122,000 is for vehicle upfitting radios and so on, which will be a one-time startup initial fee. Approximately $166,000 a year for recurring costs, if this was a successful program.
And we will continue to receive, uh, funding, uh, up to, I think, 2038, if I'm not, not, uh, yes, yes, yes.
Okay, well, I recommend a motion, um, for the adoption of the revolution of, um, opioid settlement funds approval.
That's second.
We have a motion and a second, all those in favor? Somebody raised it. Motion so carries. Thank y'all, and thank you for answering the questions for us, I appreciate that. All right, item four. We'll turn that over to, Mr. Allen, you're up, sir.
Evening Chairman, Board of Commissioners. I have before you tonight, uh, contract for airfield lighting and signage improvements, that should also just have a small adjustment that the contract that is attached to that is a form contract, because we want to reference actually that this is two projects taking place, it's not only airfield lighting and signage improvements, but is also runway rehabilitation. Both of these contracts will be completely federally funded and are obviously, uh, meant to be for safety and other related improvements for the airport. Uh, so with that, I would simply ask for your, uh, recommendation or, uh, ask for your motion to award the bid to the most responsive bidder and authorize the county manager to execute both of these contracts and the necessary related documents.
So just to be clear, it's all federal funds, no county tax dollars?
No county tax dollars are implicated in either of these contracts.
Thank you.
All right, uh, looking for a motion?
I so move.
Second.
Motion so carries. All those in favor? All right, thanks, sir. All right, uh, fire service contract amendments, uh, Mr. Hudson, on you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Item four, B, Fire Service Contract Amendments for Godwin Falcon Fire Department and Smith's Chapel Fire Department. Commissioners, this is the exact same item that you've had on prior Board of Commissioner meetings. At this point in time, Godwin Falcon Fire Department and Smith's Chapel Fire Department have submitted signed standard contract amendments, uh, to our clerk's office, and she's included those in your agenda package. Those contract amendments just basically follow the same guidelines as all the other ones that you previously approved, approved, so, uh, at this time, before the board, would be a possible motion to approve the amended fire contracts as presented for Godwin Falcon and Smith's Chapel.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the amendments of the fire contract as presented.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, Mr. Hudson, I'm gonna give it right back over to you again, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, this is along the same vein as the last item. Uh, item C is alternative fire contracts for Piney Grove Fire Department and Turkey Fire Department. And this time, it'd probably be best for me to read the agenda item. Um, this is not something that's come before the board previously, as item B had, so, uh, let me read this if, if I could, please. So at this time, all but two departments have signed the county's proposed contract to extend fire service for five years. The two departments have not signed the contract that other contract, that other or other fire departments, including volunteer fire departments and the City of Clinton, have signed. Those departments are Piney Grove and Turkey. Piney Grove and Turkey prefer to have their own special amended contract, which would replace the contract that the other departments agreed to with a contract that changes the default multi-year tax rate to a rate of 10 cent. At this point in time, I'm not aware of any circumstances that are different than those faced by other volunteer fire departments. Now, that's not to say that the scale of their circumstances might be different, they may have different obligations, different debts, uh, different needs for staffing, because every fire department, just like every county, uh, which I'll be talking about a little bit later, uh, is, is different. However, they're the same types of circumstances. Uh, they have made their appeal to the Fire Commission, and the Fire Commission did not take a position on the issue, but rather forwarded the matter to the Board of County Commissioners. The current contract for fire services expires on June 30th. At this time, um, based on what I'm able to discern, the Board of Commissioners face one of three choices. First of all, choice number one, do not enter into a contract with Turkey or Piney Grove, let their contracts expire and take steps to assign their districts to other fire departments. Choice two, sign the original county-proposed fire agreement amendment and forward it to the volunteer fire departments for them to sign, or to choose not to sign. If they sign, continue on as normal, in that case, they would be in the same position as all the other fire departments that have already signed the agreements. If they do not sign or refuse to sign, uh, then revert to choice number one. And choice three, agree to the request of Turkey and Piney Grove and sign a modified fire agreement amendment that would set their rate at the default rate of 10 cent, which is the rate that they have indicated that they need to do to, uh, provide their unique services. At this time, Commissioners, I would, I would give you my evaluation, I cannot recommend choice one or three. They represent either difficulties for residents in choice number one, I, I do not believe it's ever a good idea, uh, to, to get in a position where you, you've not signed a contract, um, which might create jeopardy for fire service provision in a district. Um, and the, the county attorney has, has looked into all the provisions that the county would have to do to take, to take the steps necessary if choice number one were implemented. Or, I don't agree with number three either. I believe that if the county pursued choice number three, then I've been told by other fire chiefs, at least two other fire chiefs to my face, that they, they have said, well, if, if the county is interested in doing that, we would also like to come back and ask the county to modify the contract that we've done, because we would also prefer a multi-year rate of 10 cent, and would prefer to not come back to the Fire Commission or make a case. Certainly, uh, uh, one concern that has been expressed, I believe, by both Piney Grove or Turkey, uh, is that they have obligations, that they may need additional fire apparatus in the future, that, that might require them to go into debt, and if that's the case, then they would want a secure and safe revenue stream to depend upon. I did make the point at the, the Fire Commission meeting, and, and the county attorney was there as well, that this Board of County Commissioners can set a fire tax rate that varies from year to year regardless. There may be political consequences, there may be legal consequences, uh, if the Commissioners decided to take those actions, but in fact, the Board of Commissioners could, could make some other choice. So rather, um, I, I believe that a recommendation of choice number two would be something that the board should consider, uh, and that would be a possible motion to approve the county's standard fire and rescue service agreement amendment, that's been signed for all the other departments, for the volunteer fire departments of Turkey and Piney Grove, and to only disperse funding to those fire departments, provided that they sign the agreement prior to the, the renewal date of the existing agreement. And, and basically, Commissioners, if they do not sign the renewal date of the exist, by the renewal date of the existing agreement, then they've not signed a current contract with, with the county, so I believe that, that that would have, uh, financial implications. Um, I believe that the county needs to have a contract in place for the dispersal of the fire tax. So Commissioners, my recommended, my recommended action, uh, is before you, and I would recommend number two, sign the original county-proposed fire agreement amendment and forward it to the volunteer fire departments for them to consider signing.
We have any other questions?
Just to clarify, if, if we were to do number three and approve their 10 cent, we're gonna have additional departments coming back to appeal, and we've gotta have this rate set by July 1, correct?
Sir, I can't tell you which departments would choose to appeal or which ones would not, I have had two fire chiefs that have said that, that what's good for one's good for all, and that they would, they would request that the board consider a multi-year tax rate that is more of their choosing, uh, which would be a higher rate than they're currently receiving, it, or it may be a rate that's equal to what they're receiving, but they would prefer to not have to come back before the Fire Commission with a budget annually. Uh, so, I do not know, I cannot tell you how many you would have coming before you, I just can tell you what was told to me by two separate chiefs.
Any other questions? All right, I have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we sign, or that, uh, we sign the original, uh, contract and forward it to the volunteer, volunteer fire departments for them to sign or not sign.
Second.
Okay, that would be choice two.
Choice two.
All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right, uh, moving right along, we're at our purchase of a, of the use of a new voting system. We'll have our elections director coming up, please. Ms. Nye, thank you for being here.
Thank you for having me. So, um, before you today, we have found out this year that our election vendor, election systems and software will no longer support the software that we have with this Unity 3.411, so we are going through with the upgrade process for ESNS EVS 5.2.4.0, and so we have begun the process, which first off, we do a demonstration of two different election vendors, our ESNS and Heart. We currently have all our equipment from Election System and Software, which is ESNS, so, and then we went after and did a preliminary hearing with my board, Board of Elections, Sampson County Board of Elections, which my board, um, Sampson County Board of Elections has recommended to Sampson County Board of Commissioners to adopt and purchase ESNS EVS 5.2.4.0, which is in the resolution before you today. And then after that, we had a simulated election, which Commissioner Godwin was able to attend, where we had an open meeting for the public to come see the new software and see how it would do. We had, um, ballots that went into the tabulators, which is our DS 200, just for the public to see how it would work. It really is kind of like a background change, essentially. And so now, before you, I have submitted everything to the State Board of Elections, they have approved it, and now I stand before you to, um, acquire and purchase, because the Commissioners do have to make motion to either adopt and acquire it, and with this also, the North Carolina State Board of Elections has been awarded a Homeland Security grant, which will help with the purchase of the upgrade for ESNS EVS 5.2.4.0.
Good job. Ms. Raina, I believe that's a very smart move by you to get that done with Homeland Security, to help us pay for it. Uh, I think you have reviewed it, and you see that it's working, and it's something that we need, and you've had, uh, Commissioner Godwin look at it, so I don't see why we shouldn't adopt the resolution.
All right, any further questions? Now, we have two motions of action. The first one, we need to, if it's y'all's in favor, is to approve the purchase of the use of the new voting system as required.
I make that motion that we approve the purchase of the used, uh, new voting machine system as requested.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Now, the second part of that is to accept the grant funds in the amount of $3,007.14, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept those grant funds to pay for the services?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Okay, raised it. Motion so carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. to Sampson County Volunteers Rescue Squad, to serve Sampson County, we're gonna turn that over to our county attorney.
Evening again, Board of Commissioners. Uh, if you will notice before you, in addition to what, what was in your agenda, this contract was recently updated as far as negotiations with the, with the individual, Mr. Bradshaw. Uh, just to clarify, that this is not for the provision of medical services, this is purely for rescue resources, so the, um, changes to the contract that are before you versus what is actually in the agenda packet is just purely references to taking out medical and purely in reference to more, uh, rescue resources. This is also a contract that will come at no cost to the county, it is purely voluntary based and is done for, uh, for Clinton Sampson Rescue and Emergency Services Incorporated, I understand the confusion potentially with the name of the company, um, or nonprofit, that they desire this recognition and this, uh, cooperation with the county, and again, comes at no cost and will essentially act as a supplementary, uh, rescue resource force in the event of emergencies. All I need from you is a motion.
Any, any other questions, I'm sorry.
Unless you have any questions.
I make a motion to approve said pro, uh, contract.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Resolution regarding working inmates. Sheriff, I'm gonna ask you and Mr. Hudson, if y'all will, to inform everyone of what all this is about, sir. Huh?
Go first and turn it over. That's okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, uh, since I am not alone in presenting this item, I wanted to stand here with the sheriff and bring something before you that I think will be of tremendous benefit, uh, to the citizens of, of Sampson County. As soon as I find it again on all these pages that I have. that I have just turned around with. Uh-oh. Oh, here we go. All right. I apologize. Between that seat and right here, somehow I have managed to get all these pages out of order, and I apologize for that. So here we go. All right. The General Assembly of North Carolina has given each sheriff of each county in North Carolina the authority to use inmates incarcerated in the local county jail under the state misdemeanor confinement program for certain work programs under rules and regulations approved by the sheriff. Specifically, inmates that meet very specific criteria that are not deemed a risk to the public may be allowed to clean up typically state roadside litter and may also work on county property, both with adequate supervision. This program is currently used in other locations across North Carolina with tremendous success. The roadways of Sampson County are in need of cleanup. At this podium, individuals in the audience have come before you- thank you- have come before you and have not only come before you, but are here tonight and have said that we do need some cleanup efforts in Sampson County. Using select inmates, not just any inmate, but select inmates to help with cleanup is a responsible method of cleaning up Sampson County's roads. North Carolina DOT will supply bags for trash and will collect all trash. Inmates are eligible to earn reduced time by participating in the program, and they're able to leave the confines of the jail under supervision. In addition, the sheriff's office will earn additional revenue from the state of North Carolina for each incarcerated inmate if a minimum number of hours of roadway cleanup are performed every month. In other jurisdictions, it is reported that the community, inmates, sheriffs, and the county have been very pleased with the program's results. It should be noted that the program is not meant, and this is specifically what I wanted to stand in front of you and say. This is not meant for the cleanup of illegal dumps. We know that there are certain intense areas where people just dump and dump and dump and dump. Some we've identified near trailer parks and other places like that. This program is not for that. The property owner of private property remains responsible for the trash on their private property. This program is specifically meant for state roadside cleanup and would have to be done that way under the complete purview of the sheriff of each county, in this case Sampson County. It is also able to provide inmates to work in select county facilities, all under supervision. Now, the program will absolutely take some time to implement, so do not expect tomorrow morning to see inmates right out here. That will not take place. It cannot take place. But the very first step in the process is normally what's happening here tonight. Before the Board is a resolution of the Sampson Board of Commissioners regarding working inmates. At this time, that is your action item, but I would like to step aside. You do have the county administration recommended motion before you, the action item, but this item can only be done under the sheriff's will, authority, and ability to perform this. And so I'd like to thank the sheriff publicly because he has been willing to take this on. And so, sir, the podium is yours. Thank you.
Thank you. If it fails, it's his fault. He taught me into it. We currently house anywhere from 30 to maybe 40 state misdemeanors for the state of North Carolina. We're currently paid 40 bucks a day for those inmates per day. I think in the Senate's proposed budget this year, they're proposing upping that rate from $40, but I don't know how much that increase would be. However, if we're able to show work hours of $500 or more, I mean, 500 hours or more per month, then we'll get $65 a day. And that would apply to all inmates that are currently under the state misdemeanor program. Inmates are currently cutting the grass, pruning shrubs, cleaning the facility there on Fontana Street already. They are currently supervised by one of the detention officers that maintains the grounds and everything. Whenever I was talking with Mr. Hudson, you know, about the grass-cutting contracts, I told him that we could probably, you know, without question, accommodate the grass-cutting at the 911 Center or EMS building. So it's real convenience right there, same property, basically. Those hours could be included possibly for the accumulation of the 500 hours. Don't necessarily need an armed officer, you know, to supervise the grass-cutting. However, if we get into the roadside pickup, then that would- will require an armed officer. Mr. Crump, I'm not asking for any additional positions or anything. However, we do have a line item that has overtime in it dedicated. Certainly, some of that money's, once we get into the, you know, the actual act of performing the task, then, you know, we'll have to monitor that closely to see what kind of time and amount of money is being invested in that. However, this could be a revenue producer. It won't be a substantial amount of money, though, okay? Certainly, I'm willing to give it a shot, give it a try because it's obvious over the last several months, there's been a lot of concern expressed by citizens with trash, and legitimately so, to be quite honest with you. We can't go and clean up a dump site, okay? But we certainly can go and see what names and all appears in these dump sites. And if we're able to recover names, then certainly we'll be making contact with those people. Of course, we're already doing that, but we'll probably step it up to another notch. Trash is an issue, okay? And I'm willing to do my part, but I don't have a backhoe. I don't have a dump truck unless our maintenance man will provide that. And none of us are trained to operate either. So, but we'll do our part. This will be one of those programs that will turn out to be a work in progress, to be quite honest with you. I do have a van that was not purchased by county monies. We received that van, I don't know, some five, six years ago through the federal government, through the LESS program. There's no bench seats in the van, but that would be a very minimum expense, you know, to put the seats in there for the inmates to sit in or sit on. And we'll have to see about getting a trailer of some sort. Wouldn't have to be nothing fancy, but we would have to haul that portage on around with it. Now, I've been, to some degree, in communication with the Lanceys. It's possible that they might provide the portage on. I'm not saying they're definitively, yes, they will do that. But we'll be helping them as much as they would be helping us if we entertain doing the program. But it's going to take me a little while to get this thing worked out, gentlemen and ladies. But I'm willing to do my part to help.
Thank you.
But I've got to set the game rules on this stuff. I don't want to be bombarded with phone calls, which could happen.
Want to thank you, Sheriff, for this information because this is a win-win situation for our county and our good environment to look better and to be better.
Well, the public certainly would like it.
Yes.
Okay, no question. And other counties have been successful, you know, in running the program. I think Duplin at one time had the program, and then they've kind of let it go to rest, but I think they're in the process of stepping it back up again, so. And these inmates now would be low-risk, not serious offenders. Now, they would be dressed, you know, in their gear that they wear in the jail while in custody. They would be easily identified and noted as being a low-grade misdemeanor inmate.
I would like to offer my thanks to the sheriff for agreeing to do this. When I spoke with Mr. Hudson about it, I remember a long time ago when it used to happen. We had inmates cleaning up trash on the road, and it's no more than right that they get out and help some with the county. And I'm just so enthused about everybody jumping in wanting to help. When you're in trouble, you got friends, and your friends will come to your rescue. And that's what I see happening now.
Well, Ms. Lady, county's problem is all offices' problem.
That's right.
Okay?
That's right. Some people don't see it that way, though, but that's the way it works. So I'm glad that everybody is jumping in wanting to help, especially the rescue. We need that, and that's volunteer. They're doing it for free. You know, maybe some more people will come up and want to help because we all see the need for the help that the county needs right now.
Sheriff, I just want to thank you for emphasizing the fact that this will not require additional employees.
Mr. Crump, I was not- I had no intent or- but having said that, I was prepared to answer, if you ask.
I was going to ask you a question about the offenders, and you answered a question, but I just want to reiterate, low-level offenders are like your DWIs, public drunkenness things that- I just didn't want people calling claiming we're letting murderers, rapists, and robbers out in the fields.
Well, Mr. Pope, that's why I said it has to be an armed officer now. However, you know, the EMS building, and if we help recreation, I think they're going to be cutting a lot of their grass and stuff. You know, certainly, we're willing to offer up, you know, those low-grade inmates to helping us this year, too. And I don't know that we'd necessarily have to have an armed guard, but we would have somebody present, okay? Even the animal shelter, I think we're trying to work out something there, too.
I appreciate the, not just with the sheriff's office, but countywide, our other agencies are doing a lot of across-the-board cooperation, and I like seeing that. Thank you.
Sheriff, appreciate you. Thank you for taking this on.
Thank you.
You got it's going to be tasteful, but I'm looking at that. At the end of the day, I'm hoping that when we all sit down, it ends up being a wash. If you get your money, we get ours, we end up, there's no inputs to the county. That's going to be great, so.
Well, that would certainly be the hope, you know, that would take place. But service is still being provided, whether- and a benefit with the service. So, you know, if it's a wash or a few extra bucks, you know, something is being accomplished, okay?
Thank you.
We won't have a dedicated person, though, or a hired individual just solely responsible, you know, for that task of supervising.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Chairman, before the Board is a possible motion to adopt a resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners regarding working inmates pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 162-58 to allow inmates in Sampson County to clean roadside litter and work at select county facilities and grounds under rules and regulations to be approved by the sheriff of Sampson County.
I make that motion.
Second.
Y'all better be quick tonight. All in favor? Motion so carries. Thank y'all.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, we got to set special meetings for the budget workshop and public hearings. Mr. Hudson, that's on you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. This evening, the Board of County Commissioners are requested to set a meeting date for the start of budget workshops with the Board of County Commissioners, as well as the statutorily required public hearing on the budget. The first one would be a special meeting. That would commence on June 11, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. in the Board Conference Room of Building C Sampson County Government Complex. It's requested that the Commissioners set June 11, 2025, at 9:00 a.m. as the date and time for the start of a special board meeting, which would be the FYI 26 Budget Workshop for the Board of County Commissioners. During this budget workshop, department heads and representatives from outside agencies would appear before the Board to answer questions and discuss the budget. This is a time for Commissioners to make decisions about the budget and place inside the budget in a form you desire. At the end of each workshop day, the Commissioners would vote to recess the meeting to the next date and time. When budget workshops are complete, the special board meeting would finally adjourn. The workshops are open to the media and the public. And, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, one note here because it matters how you set that workshop date. So when you call for a special meeting, the items that you indicate that might need to be on that special meeting is how the clerk would advertise that special meeting. So I actually have three different things that I would ask the Board to consider. Actually, excuse me, four different things that would ask the Board to consider. The first is that on June 11, June 11, 2025, that the special meeting be called at 9:00 a.m. to receive the audit from last year. The auditors will be ready to present the audit to you, and that's the audit from the year ending June 30, 2024. So that is item number one. We have received the audit, and they will be ready to present to you on June 11. Item number two would be certain budget amendments that the finance officer has talked to me about. That would also be something, and those are normal budget amendments, but it's end of the year, and this would allow her to perhaps bring something to you. Now, if we do not, and they can wait until the next meeting in July, that's what we'll do because we don't want to spend any more time off of budget topics than necessary. But it may be that that is something that would be required, so financial reports or budget amendments. Item number three would be the possibility of a possible closed session for personnel on the 11th, if necessary. And item four would be the start of the budget workshops. I don't know that items two and three are necessary, but I do know that if you don't say them, then the clerk can't advertise them. And so I would just like to cover all my bases. And it may be that you don't have anything other than an audit presentation, go straight into your first budget workshop for the department, but this preserves your options. And certainly, the Board would know in advance what would be necessary for the special meeting on June 11, 2025. And once again, at the end of the day, the Commissioners would vote to recess the meeting to the next day. Right now, I at least see that you would need to meet on the 11th, the 12th, and the 13th. So normally, this would be start at 9:00 a.m. on the 11th, and you really don't have an end time. So you would go until we finish on the 11th. You would recess until a date and time certain, which is probably the 12th at 9:00 a.m., and you'd go all day. And then you would recess to a date and time certain, which is probably 9:00 a.m. on the 13th, and go all day. And if necessary, after the 13th, you could recess until the 14th or would recommend not Sunday the 15th, perhaps, but maybe Monday the 16th, however many days you need to go through the budget workshop. And at any point in time, once you've heard from all the departments, had all of your questions answered and delved deeply into the budget, then you would simply adjourn the budget workshop.
Before we go any further, I know we've got a lot of our department heads here. I encourage you to take advantage of your time slot and take opportunity to get in front of the Commissioners. I think it's a time well spent. It will help us as we move forward in the budget process to know your department very well, along with- it will give us time to learn our department heads better. And we want to be thoughtful of the people who put us up here, but we also want to be very thoughtful for those who have committed to doing what you do for Sampson County. So please take advantage of those opportunities and the timeframes you have and come before the Board. All right. If, do we have a, I need a recommended action or motion?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we set our special meetings for June 11 through- what's your date you're requesting?
You just start them, sir.
On June 11.
Just start them, and you go from there.
For consideration of budget amendments, closed session, as part of the budget workshop.
And audit presentation.
And audit presentation, sir.
And audit presentation. I almost forgot the important thing. I got the closed session. Possibly closed session, yes.
Second.
All those in favor? Keep your raise in. Motion so carries. Look forward to seeing y'all all them days. Okay. Celebration of June 19.
Chairman, I've got one more, I'm sorry. Special meeting number two.
Oh, you're right, I missed it.
That's okay. It's requested that the Board of Commissioners call for a special meeting of the Board at the date and time above, which is June 16, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. in this room, Board Auditorium, building a Sampson County- or Board, yes, Auditorium, building a Sampson County Government Complex. And specifically, this is the statute- The public hearing would have to be advertised with a minimum, there's a statutorily required 10-day minimum notice, which we will meet if we're able to advertise this following tonight's meeting. And then the board can either continue debate after the 16th, but the budget would be available for the board's consideration after the public hearing. It doesn't have to be immediately after, it's any time thereafter, but you cannot consider the budget at all until you have that statutorily required public hearing.
Okay. I make a motion that we have a special meeting on June 16, 25, at 6:00 p.m. in the Board Auditorium Building A Sampson County Government Complex.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Are we good now? I'm good. Presentation of the celebration of June 19. We're going back to you, Mr. Hudson, roll on.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The board is requested to consider adopting a resolution to celebrate Juneteenth Day in Sampson County on June 19, 2025. At this time, I would like to read the resolution into the minutes. A resolution of the Sampson County Board of Commissioners celebrating Juneteenth, 2025, whereas Juneteenth commemorates June 19, 18 Galveston, Texas, and announced the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans in the state, effectively ending slavery in the United States. And whereas Juneteenth has become a symbol of freedom, resilience, and the ongoing pursuit of equality for all Americans. And whereas the federal recognition of Juneteenth as a national holiday in 2021 underscores the significance of this day in American history. And whereas Sampson County has a rich and diverse history with a vibrant African-American community that has contributed immensely to the cultural, social, and economic fabric of our county. And whereas the Sampson County Board of Commissioners recognizes the importance of acknowledging and celebrating the contributions and history of African-Americans in our community. And whereas the board encourages all residents to participate in local Juneteenth observances, including educational programs, cultural events, and community gatherings, to foster understanding, unity, and progress. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Sampson County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims June 19, 2025, as Juneteenth Day in Sampson County, urging all residents to reflect upon the significance of this day and to participate in activities that promote equality, justice, and community unity. Be it further resolved that the board expresses its commitment to supporting initiatives that honor the legacy of Juneteenth and to working toward a more inclusive and equitable future for all the residents of Sampson County. Thank you, members of the board. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
I make a motion that we consider the motion to adopt Juneteenth, 2025, as a resolution.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to adopt a resolution. All those in favor? Motion so carries. Thank y'all. Now, board appointments. Vice Chair Pope, it's on you, brother.
Okay. Start out with the fire commission. A motion to appoint Mr. Lamar Butler, an insurance agent, to fill the vacant insurance agent position on the fire commission.
Second.
All in favor? Motion so carries.
All right. Second motion, Sampson County Convention and Visitors Bureau to reappoint Kay Rayner to appoint Garrett Bryant and Ryan Roberts.
These are reappointments, right?
One is a reappointment, and two are, yeah, new appointments.
Okay. Thank you. Motion and a second. All those in favor? Motion so carries.
Okay. Next order of business, the Economic Development Board, a motion to reappoint Georgina Zing, Chuck Spail, and Craig Richardson, and to appoint Chuck Spail as the board chair for the Economic Development Board.
Second.
All in favor? Motion so carries.
Okay. And for the vacancy on the Airport Advisory Board, recommendation to appoint Mr. Johnny Frank Hodges to that position.
Second.
All those in favor? Motion so carries. All right. We have, coming up on item six, we have a proposed budget presentation. We're going to move, and we're going to sit down with you guys. So everyone's on about a five-minute break. They're going to check their computers. If you need to stand up and stretch or whatever, then we'll bring it right back in. So everyone just relax and give them about five minutes and make sure everything's working.
I prefer very much to face everybody because in addition to being county commissioners, you're volunteers for the roles that you're in elected by the people and you're sitting with the people to receive this budget message. So I thank you. Can every, I'm sorry, we weren't, from a technology standpoint, just one note, we weren't able to get the monitors here all synchronized. So we've got this one this evening. If you're not able to see it, please feel free to shift your seats. And this will also be available online as well. So we'll be able to make sure that everybody gets a chance to view this. Okay. Let's begin. Perhaps the most important message that a county manager can deliver is the presentation on the budget. This is a serious matter. For the county commissioners, it represents the most significant policy decision in a year. The budget is a policy. It's an adopted ordinance of the county. And so it shows where all the money is supposed to go, what revenues are expected to come in, and what expenditures are expected to go out. So it's important that this presentation and the budget itself be precise. So I was thinking about this. This may be my last budget presentation. I'm an old guy. I'm retired. It is the very first budget presentation I have given in Sampson County. And as an interim manager, this may be the only presentation of a budget that I'm giving in Sampson County. So I wanted to be thoughtful about this. And I believe in thinking about this, I came across a question. And this question is really, it's about all of you and the people that will be watching later by social media or by television. What type of budget message do you deserve? What type of budget message do you deserve? I believe there are three components of an appropriate budget message. The first is that it must communicate the conditions surrounding the budget creation. There are forces at work whenever a budget is created in any city or county. Secondly, it must present data in a very clear manner. Because if you don't do that, what good's a message? What good's a presentation if no one can understand it? So we need to be presenting data in a very clear manner. But it occurred to me that above the first and second necessary element, there is a third necessary element. And that third necessary element is it must convey the truth. Now, I believe in quotes, "I like looking back to the wisdom of others." And one of my very favorite quotes comes from Thomas Jefferson. He said that honesty is the first chapter in the book of wisdom. So it's necessary for me to be honest with you. In fact, the Board of County Commissioners has hired me in this interim status to find the truth for you and to present the truth. Now, that is my charge, but it is also my desire. My work life has been dedicated to public service. This is my heart. I began as a town manager in, well, 1993. And I've gone from towns to counties, some schoolwork in there as well, but most of my work life has been spent in county government. The opportunities I've been given through the years have allowed me to develop the skills I need to find the truth and present the truth to you. I've successfully constructed 32 budgets of up to $215 million in operating expenses. That doesn't include the construction projects that I've been responsible for. And all of my training comes from outside Sampson County. Now, I'll tell you that perhaps I think the best part about this process for me this year is I truly am a neutral party. I am not involved in the politics of Sampson County. I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican. I don't care about your demographic status. I don't care how much land you've got. My purpose is to find the truth and present the truth. I'm also retired. And I am not a candidate for the permanent county manager position. Now, it may be that if you had your permanent manager here, a permanent manager might draw back from something because it's too hard. Sometimes the truth can be hard. But this Board of County Commissioners has told me to speak plainly and speak the truth. So that's what I'm going to do. Let's talk about that first necessary element that I mentioned. You must communicate conditions surrounding the budget creation. And I want to begin with the number one condition that set the stage for this budget. And that is the year 2024. You had revaluation on January 1st, 2024. The 2425 budget, the one that we're in right now, this very minute, that will end in just a few days, it was adopted in June. The revenue neutral property tax rate was 62.9 cent. The tax rate was dropped by 20 cent to 62.5 cents. So it was 82.5 dropped by 20 cent to 62.5 cents. Now, that is also common, by the way, after revaluation, normally a tax rate will go down because values went up. The reported unassigned fund balance at that time was about 21.5 million. But revenues did not equal expenditures. Expenditures exceeded revenues, recurring revenues. Now, it was a balanced budget, so revenues and expenditures balanced in the adopted budget, but some of the revenues were not recurring. Some of it was a use of fund balance. In fact, in the budget message last year, there was a deficit reported of $11.8 million in recurring revenues. And that was filled by using fund balance. Fund balance might be explained in one way as the savings account of the county. There are different funds, and different funds have different numbers, Fund 19, Fund 21, Fund 11, all kinds of things like that. That's all the accounting and things that the finance officer and the finance department can talk about for hours. But generally speaking, it's a way to balance a budget. It's normal to use fund balance. I've used fund balance to balance just about every budget that I can possibly remember. It is legal. It's entirely possible to use it. And in fact, you did use it. It is, however, a little unusual last year in that it was the largest appropriation of fund balance in this county's history. Fund balance may be a revenue, but it's not a recurring revenue. So here's something to take note of, and I want you to remember a couple of numbers. 11.8 million in fund balance appropriated in '25 would be the equivalent of 16.75 cent of property tax revenues in fiscal year '26. One penny on the tax rate this year, according to our tax office, yields about $704,000. So if you take that and put that into the 11.8 million in fund balance used last year, you'll come out with about 16.75 cent in property tax equivalent, if you will. So how does this look graphically? How does this use of fund balance, which is normal, and it's legal, and it's possible, how does it look for the last several years? Well, it looks like this. Here you have fiscal year '21, '22, '23, '24, and '25. You have 1.8, 2.6, 2 million, then 4.4 million, and then it jumps from 4.4 to $11.8 million in usage. Now, why did it jump up toward 4.4 million in fiscal year '24? Because there was a pay and classification study that started, and some more money had to be infused into pay and classification for employees. But it went drastically up from 4.4 million to $11.8 million. Now, I shared this slide with department heads, and I've shared this slide with others. And this was somewhat of a surprise to some people. But the fact is that the balancing of recurring expenditures with recurring revenues in this year, this budget that I'm working on now, have been working on, was the single greatest condition affecting the creation of the fiscal year '26 budget. So we're leaving fiscal year '25 behind at the end of June and moving into the fiscal year '26 budget. Making those recurring revenues and recurring expenditures match for the coming year was very important. But you know, this position that we're in is no surprise. Page two of the FY '25 Sampson County budget message from a year ago says, and I quote, "Fortunately, we have the cash reserve to support the level of county government herein proposed until decisions are made on how to develop the future '25-'26 budget." This gives the board an entire year to plan for succeeding budgets. So this was not a surprise. In fact, it was clearly communicated on page two of the budget message that really 11.8 million was used. And if I can paraphrase, my interpretation of this statement is, now y'all have a year to figure something out. And so we have had to figure something out. I believe that once again, the number one challenge was the stage that was set in fiscal year '24. But there's another challenge, or condition, I should say. These are conditions affecting the budget. Condition number two is changing personnel, centralization of knowledge and lack of training. You had changed personnel. The county manager changed, the finance officer changed, other positions in county government changed. And that's important to know because there was a centralization of knowledge. I've talked with every single department head in this county and no small amount of other county employees. What I've told, I'm not making this up, what I've told is, was that there was a centralization of key decision-making, which is natural for managers and for chief finance officers. But that drastic centralization of knowledge meant that this year, department heads had to start out learning some new things. One of them, for example, was how to do zero-based budgeting. How you need to start from zero in a line item and build that up to determine how much money you might need for fuel or departmental supplies. There's also a lack of training. There was a lack of training from the staff that still remain at the department head level, what might be necessary to go in and trim budgets. Because I've been told that in the past, a lot of submissions went in and budgets, final budgets, came out. Well, we did something different this year, as you'll see in some future slides. A lot of people were involved in the creation of the budgets. And in fact, the department heads came together time and time again to look at their own budgets. There's another condition, of course, that affected this year, and that is the unique tax base of Sampson County. Now, every county is unique. Some counties have other forces that affect them. My home county of Onslow, we have three military installations. We have lots and lots of military personnel, and we love our heroes. We are a community of heroes. And the thing is, that means that we don't have a lot of industry, but it certainly does mean that there is a federal payroll that comes into Onslow County. So if you look at the character of a county, that's very important. For Sampson County, one character of the county, something that's very important, is the amount of land that you have under present use value. Now, present use value is extremely important. Present use value is necessary. We advocate for present use value because our agricultural industry is very important. And present use value is necessary for farmers. But what does it mean to a county? Well, for Sampson, 48% of the county is farmland, and 42% is timber. What that means is there's about 404,588 acres in present use value. And you say, "Well, Jeff, what is present use value?" Well, present use value is a state law that allows the valuation of farmland or timber to be kept at a lower rate than it would be if it were going to be sold for a subdivision or was not in agricultural use. So for example, and this is data that was provided by the tax office and Cooperative Extension also helped on this, pulling numbers together. Farmland that might be valued at $5,000 an acre has a present use value of $850. Timberland that might be $2,500 an acre has a present use value of $245. And if you just have a farm and it's not being used for anything, and you're about to sell it for a subdivision, shoot, you might get $12,500 an acre for it. Or in some places, a lot more. Now, the effect of that is that there's about $800 million in deferred taxes each year, which means for the recurring revenue of Sampson County, that's about $5 million per year in recurring annual revenue that the county does not receive. Now, that doesn't mean it's wrong. That just means that it's part of the character. It's part of what is a condition that affects Sampson County. In other places, like Brunswick County, you've got extreme growth, growth that's just crazy. They have to build about a school every year or two years to keep up with the kids and people coming there. But you've also got land values that are through the roof. An acre of property in Brunswick County or New Hanover County is crazy. So it's just something unique, but it's a condition that affects the tax base, and that means it affects the budget. Condition number four, you had fire contracts that end this June. Now, tonight, the Board of Commissioners signed two more and are sending, through the clerk to the board, two more contracts out to the last two fire departments, hoping that we will now have all of the fire departments signed up for another five years. The county had to successfully negotiate those contract extensions to ensure continued fire service. Residents depend on the fire departments to save lives and property, and also reduce your fire insurance rates. So it's important that we were able to do that for fire departments and build that into the budget. Condition five, Commissioner goals. For perhaps the first time in a long time, the commissioner sat down and gave specific goals on a wide-ranging number of areas to be responsive to the needs of the community. So in the budget, we needed to be responsive to those goals. I'm just going to highlight four. There are dozens of them, but here are four that I want to highlight. First, maintain the county government's positive financial position, low tax rate, and credit strength. I'll tell you, from my perspective, I interpret that as, don't spend more of your savings than you have to. Be financially prudent. Two, ensure. Ensure the security and safety of government IT systems to protect the county workforce, citizens of Sampson County's personal information, and public data from cyber attack. There are threat actors out there that attack governments routinely. I worked for a government at one point in time, and there was a successful cyber attack. I asked the state IT strike team to come into Sampson County and do an independent evaluation of our cybersecurity. So one of the recommendations means that we will have to invest more in some of our IT infrastructure. So we're following the recommendations in this budget of the IT strike team. Create. Create an inclusive process by which fire tax levels are determined in districts throughout the county, such that funding for departments is sufficient to maintain the mission of volunteer departments. I believe that many of the fire chiefs would tell you that we have a much better relationship now with the fire community than we have in the past. We have contracts that are signed for all but two, for five more years. And I think that we've built relationships. And then negotiate and jointly adopt a funding formula for public K-12 education that creates budget certainty and strengthens relationships between school systems and the county. You historically have funded Sampson County schools relatively low. We'll talk a little bit more about that later. But this budget addresses that. And it is a goal of the county commissioners. So this is one of the major conditions that affected the creation of this budget. So let's talk about the next one. And I believe the next one might be surprising to you. Because I think a lot of people believe that county commissioners can pretty much do whatever they want with the money that's coming in. You know, it's that there's a lot of decision-making authority vested in the county commissioners. Now, don't get me wrong, they do have a lot. But let's talk about the mandates on counties. I looked at the programs in the departments of Sampson County Government, and I tried with the help of others to divvy those programs and departments up into three different pots. Number one, it's a mandated program with mandated funding. So someone higher than a county, the state or the federal government, says, "You will provide this service." And we're going to tell you how much money you're going to spend on it. So 17% of Sampson County Government is a mandated program with mandated funding. What is that like? It's like public assistance. There are DSS programs that the county doesn't have say-so over. People meet the criteria, et cetera, et cetera. Manded program discretionary funding. Now, what might that be? 56% of Sampson County, I believe, falls into a mandated program discretionary funding. So we will provide the program, but the statute doesn't say how many people it'll take. So let's talk about the register of deeds that happens to be in the room. We will have a register of deeds office. It does not specifically say how many employees will be in the register of deeds office. And also, there's a sheriff this year. You'll have a sheriff. Sheriff will have at least two deputies. But I doubt, no matter how good those deputies are, that three of them can patrol all of Sampson County. So there is some discretion. You'll have a function, but there's some discretion as to how much you fund the function. And that's driven in part by what we're going to talk about in a moment. So that's service levels and demand. And finally, you have what a lot of people think the chunk of the pie that's a lot bigger, that's in green. 27% of the county is discretionary program discretionary funding. So what's that about? That's your library system. That's your recreation department, where it's a quality of life issue, and people love it and may demand it, but it's not absolutely mandated by anyone above the level of the county. So if it's not a mandate, what will determine how much money to put into something? I believe that's condition number seven that affects Sampson County, and that's service level demands. So here's a chart of your population. Your five-year county population is risen from 2020 to 2024. It's gone from just over 59,000 to very close to 59,800. Some numbers now say 60,000. It's not a tremendous growth of population. You didn't double in size. However, it is a moderate population growth. But it's not just how many people you have. It's the demand for services of the people that you have. So let's talk about a couple of items that is easy to track. Using 911 center data, we were able to pick the number of 911 calls that happened every calendar year from 2020 to 2024. So the number of 911 calls increased from 106,000 to over 118,000 calls. So those are 911 calls. Well, that drives demand for 911 telecommunications. And in fact, you've added four 911 telecommunications over the last few years. Well, what about using some more of that 911 data? Let's talk about some other emergency services areas. Emergency medical services, calls for service peaked in 2022, came down in '23, went back up in 2024. So here you have demand that we can easily track the number of EMS calls or emergency medical services calls that are going out. How about fire? I don't really know what happened in 2023, but it was a better year than 2024. I mean, you've got your graph and the number of fire calls. Total call volume for fire has gone down, but in 2024, it went back up to the highest level that we're seeing, over 3,700 calls for service. That does not mean, by the way, that everyone's a house fire. It just means total calls for service. It could have been a wreck. It could have been anything that they called the fire departments out for. Next, let's take a look at the Sampson County Sheriff's Office. And here you see a trend where it's actually going down. I was curious about that, because if I look back, fires going up, EMS is going up, Sheriff's Department went down. And then I remembered something that I was taught once, which is about community policing. If you have more deputies, more law enforcement officers out in the community, and they're making contact, they're able to perhaps handle things before it becomes a 911 call. So it may be an inverse relationship to the number of people that you have, law enforcement on the street, versus number of 911 calls. You can get deeper into some of those statistics, looking at your crime rates, which I don't have in this presentation, but they're available. How about recreation programs? Your recreation programs are also going up. So this is the last slide that I have on demands for service. But you see, it's possible for county government to track how effective they are, what demands they have, as people are calling in and demanding service in different departments. And I believe it's going to be necessary in the future for us to have accountability and tracking in Sampson County government departments as we look at the number of persons served. In fact, you'll see on a slide, a few slides from now, that was a point that I made to all the department heads early on in the process. Let's talk about one last condition, and that is low education funding. So education is more than just sitting in a classroom. Education is crucial to the workforce. You can ask our economic developer, Ray, and he will tell you that the level of equality of education in a community is very important to bring jobs into a county. When a company is looking at where they're going to put their next plant, their next offices, they're going to look at the education levels of the area. They're going to look at graduation rates. They're going to look at how successful those education institutions are. Because in part, they want a good workforce. And in addition to that, if they have employees that are locating there, they want to make sure that their employees have access to good quality of life. So it is a component of quality of life. Sampson has ranked 104th out of the 115 school districts in North Carolina in state per pupil appropriations. So that's a good way to compare your county against others. And that's what's the effort made to fund education from one county to the next. You in Sampson County Schools is 104 out of 115. Now, all of those are conditions that have been affecting this budget. But let's talk about big point number two. You must present budget data in a clear manner. So let's talk about the specifics of this proposed budget. First, we start with requests, right? What did everyone ask for? Well, all the budget requests from departments and all outside organizations and agencies totaled $94,330,000. Now, that includes requests from inside, outside, nonprofits, the community college, everybody. You remember how we started out that last year was 85 million, and we used 11.8 million in fund balance to balance the budget? Well, if now you have $94 million in requests, and last year you were at 85 and used 11 million in fund balance, that's not a really great way to start. But it is a truthful request from everybody. They asked, "We want this to balance the budget. We believe that," not balance budget, rather, "we want this to do our program. We believe this is necessary." And so that's where we started. But instantly, you can tell you've got to cut something. Does anyone here believe that you didn't need to cut anything? So let's talk about how we cut. Multiple meetings of all departments and their budget teams took place. Now, this is normal for me. This is a little unusual for all the departments and their budget teams. But we went into the emergency operations center. There's a training room there. It's got big TVs up front. And I gave them the truth on where things stood based on all of the data that I received from finance, from the tax office. This is what we believe that we know. And we just put it in front of the department heads. And the department heads were held responsible for their own budgets and given input on cuts in group settings. Because in part, they want a good workforce. In addition to that, if they have employees that are locating there, they want to make sure that their employees have access to good quality of life. So it is a component of quality of life. Sampson has ranked one hundred and fourth out of the one hundred and fifteen school districts in North Carolina in state per pupil appropriations. So that's a good way to compare your county against others, and that's what's the effort made to fund education from one county to the next. You and Sampson County Schools is one oh four out of one hundred and fifteen. Now, all of those are conditions that have been affecting this budget. But let's talk about big point number two. You must present budget data in a clear manner. So let's talk about the specifics of this proposed budget. First, we start with requests, right? What did everyone ask for? Well, all the budget requests from departments and all outside organizations and agencies totaled ninety-four million, three hundred and thirty thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars. Now, that includes requests from inside, outside, nonprofits, the community college, everybody. You remember how we started out that last year was eighty-five million and we used eleven point eight million dollars in fund balance to balance the budget? Well, if now you have ninety-four million dollars in requests, and last year you were at eighty-five and used eleven million in fund balance, that's not a really great way to start, but it is a truthful request from everybody. They asked, we want this to balance the budget. We believe that, not balance budget rather, we want this to do our program. We believe this is necessary. And so that's where we started. But instantly, you can tell you've got to cut something. Does anyone here believe that you didn't need to cut anything? So let's talk about how we cut. Multiple meetings of all departments and their budget teams took place. Now, this is normal for me. This is a little unusual for all the departments and their budget teams. But we went into the emergency operations center. There's a training room there. It's got big TVs up front. And I gave them the truth on where things stood based on all of the data that I received from finance, from the tax office. This is what we believe that we know. And we just put it in front of the department heads, and the department heads were held responsible for their own budgets and given input on cuts in group settings. Here's my philosophy. If you're a department head, you have achieved a level of professional status that's pretty high. You're the head of your department. This county is paying you probably more money than anyone else in your department. May not be making as much as department head somewhere else, but you're making more than anyone else in your department. You should be the expert in your department, not just the expert in your function, like for instance, the health department, but the expert in, Wanda, the health department inside Sampson County. Because every health department is a little different, just like every county is a little different. So if you have this group of experts, you should want them to go into their own budgets that they've created and be the first one to look at those cuts. So we had those cuts. And then we had department meetings where I met with the finance officer one-on-one with each one of those department heads and their finance teams and their budget teams, and we cut more. And then I cut some more after that. So I want to share with you four slides on how I interacted with all the department heads, some of which are in the room tonight, so they could verify these are the exact four slides that I shared with them early on at the emergency operations center. So here we go. First was trying to explain the estimated situation. The estimated situation, and this was early on the budget process, okay, so we didn't have all of our numbers, but we had enough that I needed to tell them the general fund usage in fiscal year '25, the year we're in right now. It might be that of the eleven point eight, we're not going to use all of it, but we may use four and a half to five and a half million. We won't really know how much we totally use until we get into July. The estimated July 1, 2025 general fund would have been about twenty-six million to twenty-seven million dollars. The '25 current general fund balance was estimated to be about twenty million dollars. The current county building capital reserve, so that was a fund set aside by the county in times past to fix and repair county buildings. So that was about six point one million dollars. And there was a current public schools capital reserve. So if there was a roof leak or a problem with a heating and air conditioning system in a school, they could tap into that four million dollars. Recurring revenues for '26 were estimated early on to be about seventy-three million. Recurring revenues for '27, seventy-four million, '28, seventy-five million. So I showed if you keep on with a total request of ninety-four million dollars and you only have recurring revenues of seventy-three, seventy-four million dollars, you're eventually going to be in a problem. In fact, I went ahead and tell them, '26 initial budget request, ninety-four million. The budget deficit on day one was over twenty million dollars. The request, ninety-four million, and then where we thought that we were on funding, twenty million dollars. Now, assuming flat future requests, we were looking at continued deficits year after year after year. That's assuming that your revenues were the same and expenditures were still high. So then the next slide I gave them was this. We're going to make some organization-wide directives for county tax dollar-funded activities. So this is instructions to all department heads that reported to the county manager. First of all, all out-of-county travel and training is cut except for that required for licensure and certification, and that mandated by the job. Secondly, we're going to attempt to renegotiate contracts to save money, for example, housekeeping. We're going to explore increases to fees and charges to help cover the cost. So example is recreation fees. My interest was that people that use the services pay more for the services they use instead of putting it on the back of the taxpayer. So trying to make fees increase. Finally, talk with some other departments and offices to create innovation. Are there new ways to do business? Example, sheriff, mowing. This was one of the first things that we talked about a couple of months ago. Each department should reflect on whether activities or functions should be outsourced or discontinued. How much impact are you having? How many citizens are served? That's the last bullet. How much impact are you having? How many citizens are served? It's necessary for departments to collect data. Data-driven decision-making is what we should be about. So here's the next slide that I shared with them. Department heads, I said, the next steps are determined by you. Are we going to have further reductions in services? Should we have reductions in force through attrition? And in fact, we did do that. I instituted a freeze, and we then were able to cut positions once we moved some people around and we cut vacancies as they occurred. But after that, would we have a reduction in force of existing employees? Do I have to send people home? That was one of the things I absolutely did not want to do. Fifty-fifty job sharing, do we institute that? How about elimination of whole departments or tax increases? The last thing that we wanted to look at was a tax increase. We know that there is a burden on the taxpayer. And then I showed them this slide, and I think this, I tried to make this a little bit forceful to drive my point home to these department heads. How far do I have to go? Now, you can do this, or I can do this. You're the expert in your department. Can you take a surgeon's scalpel and look at exactly what you're able to cut? Or I will be less precise, but we're going to have a balanced budget. So please, department heads, I said, you go in first. And in fact, they did. And they went in first, but then afterwards, I did have to go into organizational level cuts. There are a lot of these on the screen. They're all in the budget message. I'll just read a couple of them. We cut or reassigned twenty full-time equivalent positions. We eliminated a proposed two point six percent cost of living adjustment. There's no pay raise for employees in this budget, no merit, no COLA. I am proposing four bonus days in lieu of a pay raise for employees, however. Cut all new requested positions except for one, only one, and that's in veteran services. And the reason that was approved is because it's partially grant-funded. Cut FY '26 classification requests. We renegotiated the county health insurance benefits, decreasing benefit levels and introducing lifestyle penalties to reduce health insurance costs. Health insurance is a tremendous cost when you have hundreds of employees. So we renegotiated with Blue Cross Blue Shield. I'd like to thank Ms. Dillman and the staff of HR, Patty in particular, wherever she's at, for their hard work in helping reduce those costs. We saved over a million dollars by doing that, recurring dollars. Now, that does mean, however, that for the county employee, deductibles may have tripled. It means that some drug costs have gone up. It means that there are lifestyle penalties in this budget. If you use any tobacco product, there'll be a penalty for that, just as there are in many other organizations. And in fact, that's how the insurance industry is going. We looked at those services that are completely discretionary, completely discretionary. And we looked at some of the usage of those, like the library system. We reduced the number of hours of Roseborough and Newton Grove. And initially, before the town of Garland stepped in with a fifty-one thousand dollar grant, I had recommended the closure of the Garland Branch Library just based on patron usage. I'm hopeful that with that grant, the commissioners would feel free to continue with Garland footing the bill and that the library system will help reinvent itself to bring more patrons, more users into the library. We've scheduled refinancing of debt. We cut a lot of other things in the budget, like the contingency fund from five hundred thousand to only one hundred thousand. We cut all county mowing contracts, cut most housekeeping contracts from five days a week to three days a week. We did all kinds of other things, like eliminating vehicles. We moved county property tax fire department supplements into the various fire taxes, and we also used those building funds. So of all of those things, some of the most important involve people because the big expense in county government is all around personnel. So once again, only one new position in the county veteran service office, no pay plan increase of any type for county employees, no COLA, no merit, et cetera, no position reclassifications, and there are reductions to health benefits. I would like to take a moment and pause here for a second. It's important to know, and we may hit on this a little bit later as well, but there's an impact to cost of living adjustments. Our staff started calling around today to other counties. Harnett County is proposing in their new budget, twenty-one new positions and a three percent COLA and cost of living adjustment and one point five percent performance pay. Johnston County are adding sixteen positions to emergency services, twelve to DSS, three to health, two to communications, one building inspector, and they're looking at performance pay adjustment. Lenore, two point five percent COLA, adding seven positions. Columbus, however, a possible reduction in force, just like we've done, vacant intent positions, and a possible salary increase in January of '26. Granville County, two percent COLA, four percent merit pay, et cetera, et cetera. So every county is different. They may not be facing the same things that you're facing. But you do need to have public health nurses there, just like here. And if they're paying more for a public health nurse, or they're paying more for a building inspector or environmental health technician, then it may be harder to get the people that you need to provide the services here inside of Sampson County. So while you might be okay doing a no COLA increase for one year, I would highly recommend that you take a look at what your market competitors are doing and look at next year. So how do we look overall for employees? Well, I'll tell you that right now, we're at five hundred and seventy full-time equivalents. And that's not the same as full-time. So full-time equivalents, if you have one full-time person, forty hours a week, that's one. But if you have two people that are twenty hours per week, twenty and twenty, that's one forty, so that's a full-time equivalent. So we actually looked at this data and found that the county was recording how you count people differently through the years. So that's why I had to go back in and change this chart. Up until 2022, the county counted full-time employees. So not the part-timers that put together would make up a full-time equivalent. After that, they started counting full-time equivalents. So between now and next year, you have a whole year to go back in and take another look at this data and get back down to full-time employees or make it all full-time equivalents, if that data can even be recreated. Don't know that it can be. It dates back to 2015. So right now, if anyone asks you how many full-time people you've got, you've got five hundred and fifty-three. And you see this reduction from five eighty-nine to five seventy. That's the twenty positions that we went down and the one position in veteran services that was added back. So that makes nineteen. And that position in veteran services, partially grant-funded. So we've done all this cutting, all this cutting at the department level. We've done cutting at my level. And what did we end up with? We ended up with this. You start out with four rounds of cuts after that initial request. Ninety-four million, the first round of cuts, cut out the COLA right off the top, two point six percent, saved a lot of money. Negotiate healthcare, cut twenty positions. You're able to gain a lot of ground in round one. You went from ninety-four million down to eighty-six million. Well, then it got harder. Then you start getting toward the end of that barrel, the bottom of that barrel. So you could only go from eighty-six million to eighty-four million, then from eighty-four million to eighty-two million, three hundred and eighty thousand. And toward the end, it got really, really difficult, more and more difficult to cut. We got from eighty-two million, three eighty, to eighty-two million, two sixty-nine, and that's where it stood. But now, that eighty-two million, two sixty-nine, that's not the full picture. Let's break that eighty-two million down because that's not your operational, that's operational and capital. The education capital reserve fund is inside that number, one million dollars. That one million dollars is to help repair the roof on Sampson Middle School in Clinton. I'm told by the superintendent that when it rains, it rains inside the building. That's not good. That's a public asset. You know, the citizens of Sampson County own that building. If your roof is leaking and it's raining in your kitchen, you'll fix it. So this million is to help with that. County building capital reserve fund, we have needs in the county as well. We have boilers and chillers and roofs and generators and things that have to be done. We have a list. That one million, two hundred and sixty-nine thousand dollars in the county building capital reserve fund is for that. So you take that capital off, and where are you? You're just under, and I mean just under, but it is under eighty million dollars. So we're at seventy-nine point nine million dollars for the operational expense. Last year, okay, you were at eighty-five million. Well, we're down to eighty-two point two, and of that eighty-two, you're at seventy-nine point nine for your operational expense. Now, you may say at this point in time, what was left in the budget? I mean, you cut a lot, what's left. Let's talk about that for a second. I think it's important to note that all county departments continue to exist. Now, being an old county manager, I hear a lot of things through the years. And let me tell you all, Sampson County ain't no different. It's the same in Sampson County. It's the same in Anza County and other places. I received comments from people on the street, comments at, oh, shoot, the place in front of Lowe's the other day. And down here at the Exxon station, which by the way, has some of the best food I've had down here right at the end of this road. They are awesome. They have spaghetti on Thursdays, I found out, and fried chicken, which is wonderful. So you walk around, you'll hear things like this. Cut everything that's not a mandate, like libraries, recreation, and services to seniors. Well, on the other hand, you'll hear this. Don't cut quality of life. Our kids need something to do. How about cut everything that's a public handout, like social services, the health department, Meals for Seniors? Then you hear, there are few OBGYNs in the county. We have to provide maternal healthcare. We need a health department. We've got a high poverty rate. We need DSS, and some of those services are mandated. Cut education. I don't have kids in school. Well, how about increasing funding to education so our kids can do good jobs? And I should actually probably have changed that. What I really heard was, we want our kids to be able to come back to Sampson County and have jobs here in Sampson County. So we want to fund education and bring job creation and jobs back. Cut the fire departments. They waste money on eight hundred thousand dollar fire engines. They need to sell more barbecue. Don't cut the fire departments. You don't need them till you need them. And when you need them, you hope they have that fire truck that can come and help you out in your house. Look, here is my philosophy as a manager. It's the board of county commissioners that established departments. Sometime in the past, the board of county commissioners of Sampson County, not this board, a board sometime in the past, they're the ones that determined that we should have a department on aging, which is a horrible name, and should be senior services. Okay, they determined that we should have a library system. Now, they didn't determine that we're going to have DSS, didn't determine that we're going to have to have a health department, but they certainly over time determine these other things. I don't believe that it's a managerial decision as to whether or not a department should be wholesale eliminated. I believe that it's a decision by the policy board of a jurisdiction, which is the board of county commissioners. So while it is true, I have cut libraries. I've increased fees in this proposal on recreation, going from thirty dollars a child to fifty dollars a child. Now, that's tough, especially if you have a lot of kids. But no department has been eliminated. What else is in the budget? Well, we have new fire contracts. Now, we've got eighteen out of twenty fire departments, including, I was hopeful tonight that, you know, we had the two existing contracts that were signed, so now we're eighteen of twenty. Funds come from district fire taxes. We're going to begin tracking response rates with ninety-five percent required response rates. It's okay to pay them. You just need the fire department to do what you're contracting with them to do. Let's track their response rates. They should be able to do, and they have agreed to do, ninety-five percent response rates. And so they know that if they don't do that, then they'll have to come back, present, address the fire commission, et cetera. And we got five-year contract extensions now with almost all of them. We'll find out about the last two. I think that we should treat volunteer fire departments and the city of Clinton paid fire department respectfully as public safety agencies. And I hope that they would tell you that that's what we're doing. Tonight, looking at what is before you now, it's the negotiated and fire commission proposed tax rate. So we're mindful of the fact that there is a fire tax, and it varies from place to place depending on what fire district you're in. This was either the negotiated rates, which are the rows that are not highlighted in blue, or they're the fire tax rates in blue that were approved by the fire commission, which is a separate body that looked at all of the pros and cons of this fire tax rate and has recommended to the commissioners that these fire rates be approved. Now, they're higher, but this was also necessary to secure those contracts in place before those contracts expired, and they expire at the end of this month. What else is included? Education funding. You have a new public education funding formula. It's objective. It's twenty-five percent of your property tax and sales tax revenues not already going to education by mandate of statute. And the desire expressed to me by the commissioners was to try to move into the top one hundred school districts. So those are, they're all the things that are in the budget, and you roll all those things together. And let's take a look at my, this wouldn't be a budget presentation without a pie chart. It's mandated. You have to have a pie chart in every budget presentation. So here's my first one. Here's all the expenditures, all rolled together. Let's see the percentage of what these expenditures are. Now, I want to thank Commissioner Crumpler. Commissioner Crumpler looked at this pie chart early on, and all it had were dollar amounts on it. And he said, you know, I think you should have percentages on that thing. And I agree. So they're up there. Thank you, staff, for helping me with that. Public safety, thirty million dollars. The single highest expense, public safety. Now, that's not just the sheriff's office. That's also E911 telecommunications. That's emergency medical. Okay, you're talking about public safety there. Education is second at twenty-six percent. Education is second at 26%. And combined, those two big areas, public safety and public education, is 63% of the budget. And I wrote that at the top of the chart. But I, I didn't need to stop there, let's keep on, let's keep on adding. 63%, let's add 12% to that. Human services, DSS and the health department, that's 12%. Remember, a lot of the services by DSS and health department are mandated services, mandated services, mandated spending levels. Take that 63%, 73%, 75%, once you add that 12 to it. So 75% of your expenditures. Well, there's another thing you're not going to have a lot of control over. You're at 75% add debt service. This county owes money. You owe money on that EOC building, you owe money on schools. That's 6%. Debt service is over $5 million. So you're at 81%. 81% of the money that you're expending or expected to spend this year is in the big, big areas that honestly, most people support, public education, public safety. Or it's human services that you will provide, or it's debt service that you will pay. That's a lot of money tied up. Other things, not quite as necessary, and, and there's more discretion. Now, the same time we were looking at all of those expenditures, we were also looking at our revenues. So I want to thank the tax office, Jim Johnson, I want to thank finance again, can't thank finance enough with everything they've been through this year. Uh, they have, they've really stepped up. And we've looked at revenues. Now, we looked at revenues with the eye of trying to be as precise and realistic as we could. So first thing, let's look at how big the tax base can grow. We, we saw that there was a growth, an increase in about $188 million in the tax base. What that is, is new construction, it's, it's new houses, and believe me, you're going to have new houses. Uh, the planning department, they're looking at, at increased subdivisions coming to Sampson County. I know that's a topic of debate for your future. But right now, I know of 200 acres of land where the person is looking at water, Mr. Turlington, for, for 200 acres of land to be a new subdivision. Another one, 170-some homes coming in. So you have growth in your tax base. Tax collection rate, higher. I'm budgeting that higher, it was 97% last year, we're looking at 97.5% this year. Property tax revenue is going to be higher, looking at this estimate, uh, increase of 915,000 over the current fiscal year. Sales tax revenue, very strong. A note about sales tax, a lot of people have come to me and said, look, ease up on the property tax, let's put some more sales tax on. I, I don't disagree, except for the fact that the county has no authority to do that. But the county can continue to lobby and ask the general assembly to give you more authority to do that. Now, remember, one penny on your property tax rate's worth $704,000. Well, a half a penny on your sales tax is worth about $3.8 million. What's a good thing about sales tax? Everybody pays it. Everybody goes to Walmart. I go to Walmart, I go to Walmart while I'm here, and Lowe's, my favorite store, okay? Um, and obviously the Exxon station right up the road. So I leave my sales tax money with you. But if you had more, that would be better. Investment earnings, you actually earned 835,000 in '23, you earned 1.7 million in '24. For '25, you only estimated 550,000, I bumped that up to a million. Proposed fee increases. I am increasing fees in the proposed budget, so that people that use the services are, are the ones more, that are probably providing for them more. And this, this is across the board, you really need to look in the budget book for some of those fee increases. In fact, uh, I have set down, now that's not an increase in fees, that's total fees, just, I heard a gasp from the audience just now. That is not, not going up 7.6 million, that's total fee revenue, okay? But, but it is up. So we've talked about a lot of things. Where am I at on your fund balance? Remember I said the first condition? The first condition, ladies and gentlemen, was, was where we started out. And my number one driver was to bring revenues that are recurring in line with rev, with expenditures, okay? So this is where my budget's at as a proposal. I've brought the use of fund balance from 11.8 million dollars down to 1.3 million dollars. Now, that will help put you in a better financial position, and it will help you as you go into the future. You do have some challenges next year as well. I want to say publicly, if you need to use a little more fund balance next year because you need to do a COLA, if, if growth isn't what's expected, uh, if you're facing other challenges, and, and I outline a lot of those other challenges I think you'll face in that budget book right there, then, then if you need to go back in, that's fine, but hopefully your growth in the tax base is going to help. You do need to hold your expenditures at this level for a couple of more years to the extent possible. But this puts you in a much better position to do what you need to do. So using 1.3 million in, in savings, limiting ourselves to that, where are we at? The last revenue was property taxes. Now, it's natural for us to compare the tax rates. In fact, staff today, this afternoon, they were calling around, I want to know, well, what's Lenore County proposing? Well, what's, what's our neighbors proposing? So it's natural to, to try to do those comparisons. However, remember, not every county offers the same services. Some counties have vastly different revenues. New Hanover has county property taxes, Onslow County's sales taxes are unbelievable through the roof. Sampson County, you have a different, a different thing at play, you have present use value that might depress the amount of property taxes that you receive. And counties are on different revaluation schedules, and we already know that county commissioners change tax rates. In fact, some of your counties are going through revale that are near us, going through revale, we expect them to drop their tax rate. But we've also learned that some counties are looking at increased tax rate, in part because of increased positions. So if you look at the last data that we have available from the North Carolina Association of Counties, you would see that if you just compare it by population using, using last year's numbers, the, the county adopted tax rate in '24, '25, then, then you're a little below average, but you may not be by the end of this month. Taxable property valuation per capita, the same, you can compare to surrounding counties. Surrounding counties' average as of this day, today, right now, is 72.64, 72 cent, basically, we're at 62.5. That's subject to change based on what the other county commissioners do. You can also look at counties by per capita income, and you're just a little below the average from last year's numbers. But let's just not compare ourselves to other counties, what's happened here inside Sampson County through time? Uh, there are a couple of sheets that I, I thought were really interesting. One of them is, one of them is this. Sampson County property tax rates every single year from 1974 to 2025. That's interesting reading. I mean, I'm a geek, I don't know, a geek, a nerd, I'm something, but this kind of, I kind of, I'm interested in that. We, we were able to call out the fiscal years in which there were revaluation cycles and what happened next. So here are your fiscal years, the last few revaluation cycles. 1980 was the fiscal year after revaluation. 1988, that was when you were on an eight-year revaluation cycle. 1996, 2004, 2012, and 2020. And then, of course, your last revale cycle, 2024. And we know in, in 2024, the tax rate dropped 20 cent. So of these historic revaluation years, one year after the tax rate was dropped, it went up. So tax rate went up one year later in 1980, fiscal year 88, in 2004 and 2012. So what that says, and, and I have no earthly idea what was happening in Sampson County in 1988. I was worried about my red Mustang and my girlfriend in Richlands, and, and if we were going back to Topsail Beach, okay? So I wasn't worried about that, but somebody was, and in fact, after revaluation, it went from 65 cent to 69 cent per hundred-dollar valuation. So this, this is a trend that you can see over time here in your own county, where a tax rate after revaluation will drop, and then some parts of the time, it goes on, goes on and goes back up. Interesting also, when I saw this sheet, in 2014, your tax rate was 78.5 cent. In 2015, the tax rate went to 83 cent, and it stayed there until 2018, and it became 82.5 cent. And that tax rate was the same in 2018, 19. In 2020, there was a revaluation, but it stayed the same, uh, in '21, '22, '23, '24, and 2025. And then, of course, you know, it went down, it went down this year, 20 cent, or this past year, the year that we're in now, went down 20 cent. So just because you look at all this data about taxes, and you see what other people are doing, and Harnett County doing 21 new positions and 3% COLA, and they may be raising taxes, who knows? Does that mean that Sampson County should go ahead and, and do the same? Absolutely not. I mean, in counties, we're, we're not lemmings, just running after each other and jumping off the cliff as hard as we can. You need to evaluate your own situation and figure out what is right for Sampson County. Now, that budget was balanced as is, but there were specific items that were not covered by the recurring revenues. Here's what wasn't covered. Increase in K-12 public education funding to break into the top 100 per pupil appropriation funding. Now, you've got a funding formula, but, but the funding formula didn't guarantee that you would be increasing enough to break into that top 100, but it was something that the commissioners were interested in. Save money for future K-12 school major repairs. Citizens of this county own the schools. If you don't take care of the schools, I don't, I don't know that the state of North Carolina will come down and say, you're not taking care of your house, let me take care of it for you. Fund Sampson Community College annual maintenance needs, they've been getting 250,000 a year, they needed more, I've got it at a half cent, which is basically 350,000 a year. Purchase two replacement ambulances. In that book right there, I've got the mileage of every ambulance that we have in the fleet, thank you, Mr. Rick Sauer. It'll show you that some of our, our ambulances are very high-mileage ambulances. Purchase 13 sheriff patrol cars. We have a formula right now in Sampson County that patrol cars will cycle down or cycle out at 130,000 miles, and that's so that persons that are on patrol, it might be in pursuit, have an absolutely safe vehicle to, to go in. Not, not one single deputy's life is worth not replacing a patrol car when it's time to replace a patrol car. Save money for upcoming county building major repairs. You've got some roofs that need to be replaced, you've got some HVAC systems. Eventually, you're going to have that courthouse. The electric system of that current courthouse, according to our internal experts, could use some work. I don't know that you can add any more circuits to it, according to Mr. Turlington. So the electric system is something, that, well, that's a county building. And that's, by the way, a mandated thing, that you've got to have a courthouse. So because of these things that were not in the budget, everything else is, everything else is in the budget, and so far, you don't have a tax rate increase. But when you come to these things, these are important enough, public safety, public education, that I am recommending a six-cent tax increase for Sampson County. But it's earmarked and targeted, it's not just give us more money. That's not right, that's not reasonable. Number one, a proposed tax increase for public education. Two pennies to increase funding to the K-12 public school system for current expense annual operating funding. That will help move Sampson County schools into the top 100 in the state instead of 104. Public education capital fund contribution, that's putting a penny, 704,000 a year, into a fund that will repair and maintain school buildings, or help repair and maintain school buildings. A half cent for Sampson Community College, so that's education as well, their annual capital needs. Two pennies to public safety. Purchase two replacement ambulances annually. Believe it or not, two ambulances and the equipment that go into ambulances will spend every bit of 704,000. And it takes about a year and a half to two years to get them. So the ambulances you order now are the ambulances you will be getting to replace ambulances you have in, in a year and a half or two years. Purchase 13 sheriff patrol vehicles annually. So this year, we, we believe that we needed sheriff patrol vehicles. In fact, the initial request was 17. And 17, through things that the sheriff is doing, has gone to 13. And proposed tax increase to maintain county buildings of a half a cent. So that is a county government building capital fund contribution, so that's about 350,000 a year to fix the county's own buildings, our own roofs, our own items that, that would be breaking. So that's, that's all six cents. So with that, what does it look like? And here's a second pie chart. The revenues are balanced with expenditures. Property tax is about 59% of the revenue, sales tax, 20%. I do highly recommend that you keep going, keep going after that additional appropriation for half-cent sales tax. Let, let sales tax bear more of the burden, and if you get that, or if you have the ability to do that, which will probably be by referendum, then you could use a portion of that money or all of that money to try and offset some of that load of the property tax. That's actually what we did in Onslow County. We had, while I was there, the passage of the Article 46 local option sales tax, and we used a portion of that money to offset the property tax, and of the remainder, we put all of it in public safety and public education. And that was years ago. So, you know, we're talking about taxes, we're talking about revenues, what's the impact to the homeowner? What's the average value, single-family home taxes? Tax Office, thank you for helping me with this number. In 2025, the average single-family home is valued at $157,314. Now, I can't stand here tonight and, and in the presentation to everybody, tell everybody what your tax implication is. If you have a home that's valued at more than $157,314, you'd pay more. If you have a home that's valued less, you'd pay less. But this is the average single-family home. At the tax rate that you're at now, 62.5 cent, that homeowner would pay about $983. At 68.5 cent, which is the six-cent tax increase, the homeowner would pay $1,077. And the difference is about $94 per year. And that difference is what funds all of this. K-12 public education, saving money for the future, all these things that we covered. So let's talk about that last third issue. And this is that important one, that the budget must convey the truth. So here we go. You want to know the bottom line? The bottom line is this. I believe in 2024, 2025, you had revaluation, which is an enormous thing for a county. In fact, you're having to plan now for the revaluation that will go into place four years from your last revaluation. Staff is working on revaluation now for your next revaluation, that's how big this thing is. I also believe that the budget in '24, '25 was put together with, with some expediency. And I believe there was pressure. I believe there was pressure in, in many ways. Certainly, I believe political pressure, managerial pressure, lots of pressure. There was centralized budgeting. You didn't have the breadth of budget construction that Sampson County had this year. The department heads have told me that. You had a 62.5 cent county tax rate, and that's, that's great, that's low, it's lower than revenue neutral. But you also used the equivalent of 16.75 cent of this year's tax money to balance the budget out of fund balance your savings. You had various fire taxes with expiring fire contracts. You're 104th in school funding with limited school maintenance. I was told by one person that when asked about the roof, the response was, go ask the state. And then you had concerned school districts. School districts in North Carolina do have recourse with counties if counties do not provide adequate funding for public education. They can take counties to mediation. You had 589 full-time equivalent staff. You did have a new county employee pay, pay plan that was implemented, which helped you with market, and you had continued water projects. And as Mr. Turlington said earlier in the meeting, you're going to have more and more demand for water. Keep on building wells, you're going to need them. Where are you this year? Well, I believe that the, the, the past 24 influenced, in 24, '25 influenced '26. This budget's based on practicality, and it's also based on partnerships. The school system views the county as a partner now. If not, they wouldn't have asked Commissioner Godwin to throw out the first pitch at a recent ballgame. I doubt he's ever done that before. That also means that they're going to cooperate, in the spirit of cooperation, work to help Sampson County improve. You have a 68.5 cent county tax rate that's proposed, and that is six cent more, but it's targeted. And only 1.3 million is in fund balance that's used. So that is a drastic, drastic improvement in having to use your savings. You do have various fire taxes, and some of them have gone up, all of them, I believe, have gone up. But you have a five-year fire contract in place, and the fire departments are ready to step up for the next five years under a 95% response rate that's now in the contract to step up for the next five years under a 95% response rate that's now in the contract and was not in there before. You have 570 full-time equivalent staff, including one new partially grant-funded position for veteran services. You have, in fiscal year '26, no pay raise, no merit, no COLA for staff. I am recommending for bonus days that are tied to holidays, by the way. Two days at Christmas, one day at Thanksgiving, one day at the Fourth of July. Extending those days, letting county government buildings shut down, save electricity. You do have IT security investments, and once again, we continue those water projects. So let's talk about the bottom line again. The bottom line is that the proposed budget, it is balanced with a mixture of cuts, moderate fund balance usage, and there is a tax increase proposed. Now, the county commissioners decide which option is best for the county. I think, looking at all available options, these are the options that I see. First of all, you could maintain the mixture as is. There is a mixture right now, major cuts, six-cent tax increase versus the use of 16.75 cent in fund balance last year. And there's also moderate fund balance. And you could maintain that as is, or you could lower the proposed tax rate by doing the same thing that was done last year. Increase the reliance on fund balance for recurring expenditures. Now, that means that it's a non-recurring revenue for recurring expenditures. Now, you hopefully will grow the fund balance somewhat this year, so this will work for a while, and maybe growth will continue to keep up. Option three, lower the rate by cutting the contribution to the capital reserves. Just don't put money aside for future building needs and construction. Half-cent county buildings, well, when the roof finally goes through, then we'll worry about it. One cent for school buildings, tell them to go see the state, fix the roof. Option four, lower the rate by cutting departments. You know, if you look at the budget and you look at how much money it takes to run a department, the library system's about a penny. The recreation department, I mean, the whole recreation department's about a penny. Senior services, about seven cent. You know, I went to Dollar General this past weekend, and I was walking down the aisle of Dollar General, and I saw this bottle of Coca-Cola. I don't like Coca-Cola, and I really don't like Diet Coke, but it had my wife's name on it. That is smart marketing, by the way. So this bottle of Coca-Cola had Angela written on it, and I said, "I'm liable to be in the doghouse at any point in time. I'm just going to take this..." Really? A picture of that? I'm going to take this bottle of Coca-Cola home, and I'm going to give this bottle of Coca-Cola with Angela to my wife. And I went up there and I checked out, and I admit that I also got a honey bun, because if you have a diet drink, it offsets all the calories of a honey bun. Right? Now, you know what? This Coca-Cola cost me $2.50 at Dollar General. Let's talk about what's on the screen right now. That one penny for a library, that one penny for recreation. Let's go back to that slide. That slide that showed that house. $157,314 value house. Guess what one penny per month on that house is? One penny on that house, okay, per month, so a penny for a year, and it's not just one house, I know that. It's all the houses, and it's all the farms. But a penny on that house, the average, is $1.30. That is less than this $2.50 Coca-Cola. Now, that doesn't mean that you should make a decision based on that, but I'd like to put it in perspective. You could cut every bit of every library. You can cut every bit of every recreation, cut every bit of senior programs. You're not making up six cent. You're just not going to do it. Six cent in this year is $4.2 million. There's nowhere else to go get $4.2 million unless you don't fund education, you don't buy ambulances, or you go into departments, okay? You might say, "No, no, no. We're going to fund education. We're going to fund ambulances." You're going to find the cut somewhere else, okay? We have tightened down on these budgets from $94 million to $82 million. Department heads will tell you, they've gone in and they've cut travel and training that they really need even to go to another community and to learn best practices, to find a mentor to gain better knowledge, to bring back and serve Sampson County better. That's even been cut. The only thing you've got left, you've got these people, and you've got those people, and you've got those people, and you can cut animal services and send the people home, and you can cut these departments. And that goes into the policy decision of simply deciding that Sampson County doesn't need the following services anymore in this county. And that will make some people very happy, and it will make other people that depend on some of those services very upset. What you believe is important is dependent on your situation. I am blessed. The Lord has blessed me and my wife. I have a cell phone. I have unlimited internet. I can order Amazon, and my wife will tell you, sometimes I do, and it comes to my house. I can get any book I want. Not everybody has that luxury. And there was a time in my life that I did not have that luxury. I did not grow up rich. I grew up in rich lands, and my dad died when he was 15. Oh, excuse me, when I was 15, he was 75. That would have been something. So I was 15, he was 75, and he passed. And we sold our farm because of the amount of money that we owed Duke University for his cancer treatments. And I went to the library, and I got my education, and getting that education is the only thing that got me into this career. So it's not necessary for me now, but it's necessary for somebody now. And so when we look at cutting these programs, that is the hard decision. I tell you what, none of you should envy the position that those five county commissioners are in right now. Do you understand that? Because they're making the decision of the burden of taxes on individuals versus the necessity of police protection, law enforcement protection, the necessity of EMS services, the necessity of helping people climb out of poverty in a county with sometimes a 21% poverty rate. So those are options. And option four, option five, commissioners could choose to increase the rate. Commissioners can do what they want to plan for future needs, including a COLA to remain competitive in recruitment. And certainly, option six, you can do some combination of the above. In the end, I will tell you that my professional opinion, and you've hired me for this, you citizens have paid my salary while I've been here, it's my duty to give you my opinion. I believe that further major reductions will only be achieved through the reduction of essential services such as public safety, cutting public education funding, or the outright deletion of quality-of-life services that citizens rely upon. Not every citizen, but some citizens. And it's important to you if you happen to be that citizen. I recommend that the board adopt a mixed approach that balances modest use of fund balance. Do not repeat the mistakes of the past. Major cuts and a reasonable increase in property taxes, and keep pursuing the sales tax. There are days of workshops and deliberations ahead. Everyone in this room heard earlier, the board has set the 11th as the start of the workshops, and those workshops will go on. Department heads have worked on this budget every step of the way, and I believe the department heads are ready to talk about the services that they provide and to answer the hard questions of the board. The department heads know, board members, that they are to come before you. They know they are to sit there and to answer any questions, talk about the mandates, talk about all the rest. Now, even as long as I've spoken tonight, it barely touches everything that's in that budget book. For the rest of the story, you have 600 pages, 600 pages of budget book for the fiscal year 2026 Sampson County proposed budget. Now, it's divided into sections. You'll see the fee schedule in here. You'll see the budget detail. This is a hefty thing. Can't go through all of it. I didn't touch on a lot of things tonight, like the water department. They're not supported with property tax money. They earn their own money. Didn't talk so much about transportation. They earn their own money. I talked about the things involving the property tax, because I felt like that was what you most needed to hear. So what are the next steps? There are several next steps. This is not a done deal by any means. The next steps are this, public information and commissioner workshops. I take public information very seriously, and I hope that you understand that from me tonight. Today, hard copies of the budget are available in county administration and in all the branch libraries. Online publication has been accomplished or will be accomplished by the end of this evening, and I'm getting the affirmative nod of yes. Today at 1:00, I met with Ms. Abby Kavanaugh, the news editor for the Sampson Independent, and other members of the media, and we had an editorial board. I sat down, and I guess it was two and a half hours or so, and we went through the pertinent aspects of this budget. So that was today at 1:00. Town hall meetings are still being planned, but they're going to be advertised. In fact, they're set. Clinton, I will be right here in County Administration Building, June 5th at 9:00 a.m. Garland, I will be at the library on June 6th at 10:00 a.m. Newton Grove, I will be at the county library at Newton Grove on June 9th at 6:00 p.m. I wanted to throw an evening in there as well, so two mornings and one evening. Budget comments can be received at budgetcomments@sampsoncountync.gov. Now, earlier tonight, ladies and gentlemen, you heard the commissioners. They did take a motion and voted that they establish the workshop on June 11th, starting at 9:00 a.m., and there's a lot to cover. I believe that that will last June 11th, probably into the 12th, the 13th. Department heads, I've already produced a tentative calendar for you that's subject to a little bit of change. We'll have to accommodate a couple of people that might or might not be able to be there on one day, but department heads already know all the major departments coming before the board one at a time with blocks of time set aside for them to talk to the board. Then, of course, the public hearing that's recommended and now been voted on for Monday, June 16th at 6:00 p.m. This is a difficult budget. It is not an easy thing. It's not an easy thing for a manager to ever recommend a tax increase, but it's the responsible thing. Sometimes, sometimes it's necessary. And thankfully, through perhaps revaluation or through other means, you haven't had one since 2015 in terms of the tax rate. With revaluation, you may have had changes in what people have paid, but at least this last time, it went down below revenue neutral. So it is a hard thing, but we know that things increase over time, and the challenges you face may very well grow. So this is not perfect, because nothing in this world is, but this is the very best that I believe the citizens of Sampson County that also happen to be many of the department heads of Sampson County and the finance team and the HR team can put together and present to you commissioners. So at this point in time, my job as your budget officer is drawing to a close, because this stops being the county manager's proposed budget for me to work on, and it becomes the county commissioner's budget for us to help you examine the departments, ask the hard questions, and go from there. In any event, you have a wonderful county. I have never gotten into Sampson County and driven around and met so many people as I have since working here, and it has been an absolute blessing to me. I do pray that God continues to bless Sampson County, that he gives the county commissioners wisdom, and that as you move forward, you're able to find just the right path. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to serve you during this time. That concludes my presentation. We'll need a five-minute recess, sir. We'll need a five-minute recess, sir. We'll need a five-minute recess. We're going to get out of this house anyway. We'll 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 get out of this house anyway.
... concerning my issue that I have. Thank you for what you're doing. I met with the interim county manager a couple of months ago, I believe it was, and discussed some things, and he shared with me there some. He wasn't here for what he and I were discussing, but preferably whoever you choose to place in that position would be as open-minded and objectively as you have been concerning the budget, sir, and would not succumb to cliques and political affiliation or what have you, and I commend you on that. But my issue going forward, I will be doing this every month until some things are changed. I'm calling names out now. I've been very, very vague and reserved over the last two years. I have in my hand, and since you're leaving, I want to exempt you from getting one of these pages, but from the attorney on, you can take a sheet and pass it on, so everybody can see what I'm talking about here. This is what you have in your hand, and attorney Allen knows what conflict of interest is. And it's, take one and pass it on, sir, please. Thank you. Thank you. Attorney Allen knows what conflict of interest is. Your DSS attorney, Mr. Frank Bradshaw, back 11 years ago, excuse me, 13 years ago, had a conflict of interest concerning his client in the illegal abduction or taking of my granddaughter. And each of you know what that is about, so the reason I've given you that, somebody's messing with my time. The reason that I've given you that is because he's not only done that to us, he's done it to others. This is validation and proof of Frank Bradshaw unethical and scrupulous activities, as the DSS attorney that you also, well, not this sitting board, but previous boards renewed his contract. And not only has he done unethical things with DSS, but some other contracts he has with the county as well. So every month I'll be coming here, I have recordings of DSS, recordings that I have that I'll be sharing, individuals with DSS from the director, previous director on down, even with the Human Resource Department as well. So exposure is at hand. I told you all last month, gloves are off, so preferably you all will hold people accountable for their actions going forward, and no matter who they are, political affiliation, ethnicity, socioeconomic status, you will deal with it. Thank you. Y'all have a blessed evening.
Thanks, sir.
Mr. Brown?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm here tonight because a few years back, I heard a lot of bad things about the county commissioners. I didn't hear anything good, and so I said, okay, well, let me go take a look at this myself, okay? There's an old saying, believe nothing of what you hear and only half of what you read. So it's up to me, as a citizen, okay, to do my part in helping and participating in the government, particularly here in Sampson County. I've been very impressed tonight. I felt like a trust had been broken from the previous county commissioners, not just last year, a number of years back, and it's very difficult to restore that trust. And so when your county manager, or our county manager gets up here and says, "I'm going to speak the truth," and he's got his numbers, and they reflected that, and he tells you how they arrive at that, that does a lot to build and restore trust back. I almost wondered if you came over and looked at my notes tonight, because one of the things I want to mention is that we, as the citizens of this county, we need to help you. We need to help you get every bit of information that you receive, like this budget. When I came here, I heard mentioned about we're a Tier 1 county. What the heck is a Tier 1 county? You know, it took me about two hours running through the internet and the North Carolina government to find that and research it for me to be able to understand what that is. And I bet if you ask 1,000 people in Sampson County, they couldn't tell you what that is. They don't have any idea how it affects us. They don't have any idea how it affects the budget process and the needs of this county. And so what you're saying, better newspaper coverage, radio coverage, you know, perhaps we can even have people from each of your districts that will offer to say, "Look, I have a meeting at my home, and we'll have eight or 10 people that'll meet there, and then each one of us will go on our Facebook page or X account, and we'll put this information out to try to get more people in the county to understand what's going on with their taxpayer dollars." I teach seniors in our church, and I'm already having to put my flak vest on, but there's something that's simple on the tax sheet for refunds. These taxes were assessed through clerical error as follows. When I first read that, I thought, why are we paying people when they don't know how to do their job? So I met with Mr. Johnson in the tax office, found out that's a requirement by statute to be put on there. Doesn't have anything to do with the performance, but a lot of people, they don't know that. They don't know what's required by statute. They don't know what affects them. And so I encourage everybody to meet with all the commissioners and the people within there, like I've been doing, and talk to them one-on-one. They are great and wonderful people.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
I reside at 2427 Roanoke Road, Clinton. I'd like to thank you for the opportunity to address the commission. I am 74 years old, and this is probably my first appearance before this board. That does not probably speak well of my involvement, but might speak to the seriousness that I hold for the upcoming county budget. Thank you, Mr. Hudson, for a great presentation. I appreciate it very much. It's very detailed and very insightful, and I think very truthful and honorable presentation, so thank you for that. Past that, first, let me thank Commissioner Crumpler for the wealth of information you have provided to our citizens regarding past and the upcoming budget. Transparency is always helpful to our citizenry. The numbers you have provided bring to light some serious considerations to the budgetary trends in our county, that being that expenditures are increasing three times faster than revenues. I too like quotations. To quote an old Farm Bureau friend of mine from Northampton County, who's once said, "When your outgo exceeds your income, your shortfall will be your downfall." We have increased taxes on our citizens to a point of frustration. Been here all 74 years of my life in the same place. I've paid taxes probably 50 years in this county. The tax rates have come and gone, but every year they increase when I write a check, every year. For the larger property owners of the county, a rate increase hits their pockets the hardest. They carry the majority of the tax burden, and it hits them very hard. For small property owners, especially those living on limited incomes, a rate increase hits them all the harder. They may not have it to give. At this point in our county's history, a rate increase may not be the answer. Cuts to budget seem to be more rational. If you need to look to where these cuts should occur, look to where, over the past five years, the largest increase in departmental budgets have occurred. Mr. McLam, two years ago, you ran for this office on a platform of fiscal responsibility. I hope you will live up to your statements. Mr. Pope, last year, you ran on a well-published campaign promise that you would not vote to increase the tax rate. I hope you will live up to that promise. Mr. Gobin, Ms. Lee, you represent many in this county who are the small property owners, many on limited incomes, and who live in your particular districts. I hope you will continue to represent them well. Another quotation from Coach Lou Holtz, "It is never right to do the wrong thing, and it's never wrong to do the right thing." Lady and gentlemen of the Sampson County Commission Board, please vote no to a tax increase and make the necessary cuts, and please leave the ballots alone.
Greetings, county commissioner, and as well as community. I would like to, first off, by saying thank you so much for recognizing and the consideration for making Juneteenth, June 19th, yeah, June 19th, a recognized day for Sampson County. So thank you so much. I am Stephanie Graham, 108 Sampson Street, Clinton, North Carolina, 28328, and I am here representing on behalf of the Sampson Juneteenth Committee, which is a part of the Community Uplift Initiatives, a 501(c) nonprofit serving Sampson County. Now, we've all heard the saying, this isn't necessarily a quote, but it is a saying, so I guess it falls in that line. We've all heard the saying, "You are only as strong as your weakest link." But what if the weak didn't know that they were really weak? That they were just unheard? That they were just unseen, right? Everybody who says they're weak, they're not always weak. So that's why I stand before you today, to invite you all to the Sampson Juneteenth Third Annual Event and Celebration in downtown Clinton. It's going to be held on the day, Thursday, June 19th, starting at 3:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. You see, Juneteenth is more than freedom, right? The slaves were freed. They were advised. But it's a reminder for all of us that it's not free now, none of us is truly free. If that one person is not free, then are we all truly free? So think about that weak link again. Are they unheard, or are they unseen? It's time for us to celebrate as a community together. So if you are interested in being a sponsor, vendor, or an attendee team, we would love to have you all be a part. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Sutton?
I believe he's...
Larry Sutton?
He left.
Okay. Mr. Paul Janampa? I'm sorry if I said that wrong.
Okay. Just with a H instead of a J, that's it. All right. Good evening, commissioners. Chair, this is my first time here. My name is Paul. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm here on behalf of a coalition, a grassroots coalition named Unidos por la Tierra y la Comunidad, United for the Earth and the Community. And I'm here just to introduce our coalition and make an invitation for y'all. Our coalition was founded in 2024 and is made up of Latina-led organizations in eastern North Carolina and community members. Our community members are youth, elders, workers, farmworkers, students, and others. We believe that everyone, regardless of the language they speak or where they come from, deserve clean air, safe water, and a voice in decisions that impact and affect their lives. Really, our coalition that was recently established is focusing on leadership development, civic engagement and advocacy, and community-engaged research. And really, we want to work with local government agencies and other stakeholders to support that work, really recognizing the efforts that y'all are doing at the local level, state agencies are doing at the state level, to include community voice in decision-making. When it comes to civic engagement, we want to have the inclusion of Latino, Latina communities in decision-making spaces, in boards and commissions. And we want to be included and feel valued, and again, work with government. Our community-engaged research involves universities and other partners. We have developed, we're developing a geospatial map showing key risk factors, like mobile home parks, flood zone, and emergency shelters, to help local and state agencies better understand where vulnerable communities live. We're also analyzing emergency plans in all 100 counties in North Carolina and seeing opportunities to better include Latino residents. My invitation to y'all is that be on the lookout for an email from me to set up a meeting or be on the lookout for a call, because again, we want to work with y'all, and we have an event here in Sampson County on July 8th, where we want to have a space for community to meet with state and local agencies, to find areas where we can collaborate, learn about your priorities when it comes to including Latino communities in environmental concerns and disaster preparedness. Thank you very much.
That's all that we have.
Well, that concludes our public comment period. One of your county managers, you got anything else you'd like to add in that, sir?
Just one piece of good news, sir. I'd like to recognize the Recreation Department. Earlier this evening, the sheriff and the commissioners made a historic decision to be able to begin using inmates for roadside cleanup, but that doesn't also prevent just volunteers from coming together. And in fact, the Recreation Department came together with their own employees and were able to clean up a portion of Sampson County, and they did that on their own time, and we appreciate very much them showing an example to others. In fact, for those of you that look at that budget book, there's a prominent picture of a whole bunch of people in orange vests, and that is your Sampson County Recreation Department, when they were out there picking up trash as well. So just want to say thank you, Department of Recreation. Commissioners, this is a good example for other people to follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioners, you have any other comments or reports? I think we're good. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to go into closed session for the NCGS 143, 318, 11, 6 personnel. So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. We are now in closed session. We are now in closed session.
In closed session, no action was taken.
We need a motion to come out of closed session.
I make a motion.
Come out of closed session.
Second.
I'm gonna go home. Make a little.
All in favor, yeah. Motion so curious. No action was taken in closed session, but the instruction was given to our county manager.